Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session. I form this meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Alett.
Present.
Mr. Baltimore.
Here.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Hodges.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here. Thank you. And to the audience, we have two of our council members on speaker because they could not be in attendance tonight and they didn't want to hear what's happening at the legislative session. So if you hear them on the phone, that's who they are. Okay, moving on to the invocation, Mr. Alett.
We could just take a minute and pause and keep those who are less fortunate than ourselves in our thoughts and prayers, and also thoughts for continued safety for our residents as we get into the summer months and for, obviously, the enjoyment of summer and all that comes with it from our youth, but also for safety and protection for them as they're out playing in our neighborhoods and taking part in our activities this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alett. Moving on to Pledge Allegiance, Mr. Baltimore.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Baltimore. Moving on to Communications, we have Mr. -- I'm sorry. Hi, Mr. Reddick would like to speak to the council as well as Ms. Kelly, Marita Kelly. She's come here today with us as well.
Good evening. Glad to be present again this evening. I have some news to share with council. I met earlier with Mayor Papenfuss and also Council President Williams to announce my retirement from state government service as of the end of July.
What?
Never fear, however, the state wants to ensure that Harrisburg's recovery continues and that there is a quarterback who can continue in my stead, and that's going to be Ms. Marita Kelly, who is here with me tonight. We will be transitioning my responsibilities over to her, and also I want council to be aware of the fact that our supporting team, the consulting firms that we have engaged to assist the city, will continue to support Ms. Kelly and the city as the city's recovery progresses. You know, I've been involved with Harrisburg going back since 2010, whenever you originally entered Act 47, moving through the initial stages, moving through the development of the Harrisburg Strong Plan, having that plan consummated in 2013, which addressed the overwhelming debt issues, and continuing forward in 2014, 15, and 16, serving as coordinator. And I really have to say that, you know, congratulations go to all of you, mayor, the administrative team, the different departments, city council for the work that has occurred. You've come really a long way. You know, certainly, city finances are very stable as we look at things today. There are still challenges that remain for the city to ultimately be able to exit Act 47, but clearly, you're in a much better place than you were whenever the department originally engaged with the city back in 2010. A lot has occurred. I know we've had our ups and downs, but, you know, I really commend city leadership, elected officials, and the supporting staff in the city to really embrace the recovery, make some of the difficult decisions that have had to be made. It hasn't been easy, but, you know, you persevered, and as I said, the city is in a much better place. And I leave you with the knowledge that, you know, I can see a lot of very positive things occurring in the city, and, you know, I see a lot of bright lights as you move forward. So it's been a pleasure working with all of you. I'm still around for the next month, and I'm sure we'll be talking somewhat, but, you know, I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly, it's a sad day to hear that you're leaving, Mr. Reddick. You've been such a wonderful professional employee with me. We've had a lot of ups and downs and challenges and issues with the city of Harrisburg, but, you know, we prevailed. Through you, we've able to accomplish a lot, you know, which is positive for the city. I just wanted to extend my, you know, sincere thank you to you because, you know, you've been there 100% with us. And I'm sorry to see you go, but I'm happy to see you are retiring, and you can enjoy your life and your grandkids. So thank you very, very much for helping to make this city from $683 million deficit to now we have a surplus. Thank you so much. And I look forward to working with Marita. Her and I was friends for a long time, so it's going to be a pleasure working with somebody that I already know and I trust. Thank you so much. Enjoy your retirement. You deserve it. Anyone else would like to say anything? Okay, Mr. Alett.
Fred, I can't believe they actually let you retire. Come on now. You know, to echo what council president said, I feel like you and I particularly spent hours as I even got initiated into being on city council to understand the Act 47 process, all the nuances that go along with it. Your input and your expertise helped us, and even we will actually, I promise you, we will get to the point of passing that debt resolution policy. We will be doing that hopefully within this fall timeframe, so I look forward to that. But I do thank you for your efforts on behalf of the city. I never once doubted your care and concern for the needs of our community, which is often hard when, you know, people look at it from the outside and looking in and thinking, can someone care about what's going on, and you did. Marita, I look forward to working with you. I feel like I've now known you for a number of years, too. There'd be no secrets. When I went through Leadership Harrisburg, I got to meet Marita in that process 10 years ago, believe it or not. So I look forward to continue working with you, and, you know, you guys have been a valuable partner in terms of us getting through this recovery process, and the work's not done yet.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to approval minutes, I'm sorry, courtesy of the floor. Let's start with my right. Anyone who would like to speak at the mic, please do so now. Mr. Petrowski, please, limited to two minutes because we have a lot on our agenda tonight.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name's Chris.
We're all acquainted.
So last week, we got news of Captain Moody asking for $65,000 worth of riot equipment for the police department, and we have several bones to pick with that. So I wanted to go on with that point about how Harrisburg Police Department does take behind the state and Capitol Police that already assigned to that detail. Earlier this year, they were asking Dolphin County for $200,000 that were denied. We feel that protesting has been severely criminalized over the last few years, even while no police officers have ever been injured at a Harrisburg protest demonstration. And we feel that the police should exist to protect our rights to free speech and not repress them. So we also heard that they're charging the city several thousand dollars for overtime, that nobody asked for those services, and when they were out there on overtime, that time was spent harassing, intimidating, and provoking protesters with a cowboy-like attitude that I find disgusting. So the arrest claim that was put out about one of the protesters attacking a police horse was completely fabricated and ran through with the press. And some of the claims that the police have put out to the media about protests in Harrisburg, like injecting chemicals into rotten tomatoes for an itching agent, is outright ridiculous. And, I mean, I have experience with the state police fabricating information through court cases, so I don't put it past them to do so again. The state police were using horses against everyone, so they also left their fecal matter everywhere in our streets and never cleaned it up. And we feel that $65,000 could be allocated better towards social services or some other program that alleviates the stress of the community rather than being used for equipment to repress it.
Thank you, Mr. Senate.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
You're welcome. Anyone else to my right, please?
My name is Maxwell Neely. I reside in Midtown Harrisburg, and I just want to reinforce everything that Chris just said. I want to mention that any time there's been a major political demonstration in Harrisburg, it has been primarily because of out-of-towners, usually affiliated with white supremacist groups, usually affiliated with hate groups of some kind. When Pride happened, somebody was assaulted. Police refused to charge the person, and police instead harassed the protester. There's better ways that we could be using that money. I think that instead of allocating the $65,000 to go towards riot gear, that's going to ultimately end up sitting in a warehouse 99% of the time until white supremacists decide to come in our town and start trouble again. That money should go to community organizations. It should go to the LGBT Center. It should go to This Stops Today Harrisburg. It should go to Make the Road Pennsylvania. It should go to CAIR and Community Responders Network. There's many different ways we could use that money, and spending it on shields that are going to spend most of their time collecting dust in a warehouse is not a productive use of the money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to my right?
Yes, hi. My name's Guy, and I'm basically going to rehash what they said.
Can you give your address, please?
Yep. 2801 North Second Street.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Yeah, so essentially, from my understanding, we have $65,000 that's left from -- from the mayor's office cutting costs, right? So that money would obviously be better spent on community organizations. I'd like to bring forward the idea that this vote be postponed to allow time for organizations to create proposals as an alternative to spending that money on riot gear, which the police department already has anyway, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to my right? Anyone in the middle? I'm sorry. Pardon me.
Hello. I'd like to add--
Your name, please, and your address.
My name is Danny. I live at 1432 North Fourth Street.
Thank you, Danny.
Yep. I saw in the article that was written up about this that one of the other proposals was for a shoot-or-don't-shoot simulator, and I'm wondering why there's no request for that as well or instead of this. And particularly in a personal matter, I'm a mental health worker, and when you see that half of all police-involved shootings involve people who are mentally ill, or that if you're mentally ill, you're 16 times more likely than someone who is not to be shot by the police. And I see a request for this amount of money for, as Max said, something isn't going to be used that often. When instead, we could be better training our police to de-escalate situations, not use force, and to give people the safety and protection they need. Yeah, because there are situations where I am being asked to call the police, and I'm worried, are the police going to go out there and shoot one of my clients? It happens. It happens a lot, and that's something I worry about, and we could do better on, especially with this money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right?
My name is Hillary Henson. I live in Midtown, and I would just like to say that every step that we make towards the militarization of police is another step away from that more inclusive community policing that I think everybody agrees is the best way for us to keep both citizens and police officers safe, and that if we spend this money on riot gear, which not convinced is even needed, these sorts of upgrades, it just lends the police like even a more terrifying look, a more divorced from other people around them. Whenever we see them at protests in riot gear, it implies that they're expecting something, and it invites them to use more force because they're not afraid of provoking anyone, they're not afraid of anything happening to them, they know that they can do anything they want, and they're completely protected in more ways than one. And I just think that that's something that should be taken into account. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to my right?
Hi. My name's Samantha Moore. I live at 1718 Green. Again, reiterating what's been said, the streets are public streets, the police are public servants, the public by and large does not want militarized servants. And I think we know that the suits won't just be used for protests, we'll be seeing them more and more. But if your minds are made up, then I would ask that you require the suits to come in a range of pastels, light pastels.
My battery's gone. Thank you. Anyone else to my right?
Hello. My name's Haniel Sindalar. I live at 2033 Green Street currently. I do just want to restate some of the points that have been brought up just because I don't think it can be said enough. I love Harrisburg. I love the people that I see in every part of Harrisburg. And the fact that the only incidents that have been problematic involving local police, state police, Capitol Police involve groups that come from out of town is very upsetting to me because I know that if they are our civil servants, they should do the will of the people, the will of the people in Harrisburg, and I think Harrisburg, all of us here, whether we're on council or not, should be able to take a stand against groups like that even coming here. Maybe if we're looking for a way to solve the problem, instead of spending $65,000 on protection for these people from all the citizens of this town, we should take a stand and say that they just are not welcome here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right?
My name's David, 1906 Green Street. I'd just like to add that in Seattle City Council actually recently -- or sorry, Portland, they recently petitioned the governor's office to revoke protest permits of the alt-right, and so there is precedence for this. It's happening. It's a real thing. Thank you.
You're welcome, David. Anyone else to my right? I don't want to miss anybody. Okay, thank you. Anyone in the middle?
Good evening, council. I'm Les Four, 2033 Bellevue Road. I've been around a while. I first became involved with the recovery plan under Dave Onkelvik. Do recall that, right? We're going to take a minute, go down memory lane. Dave Onkelvik, who got the ball started, General Lynch, who came in and took it from there and brought us along, and now we have Fred, and we're losing Fred. So Fred, I hate to see you go. Each of those persons brought something to the table, each made a contribution, and I think the city as a whole, be it council, be it the administration, or be it the citizenry, have all made contributions. We've tightened our belts, we've learned to live with less, and stick to plans, which is pretty important. So I would like to say hail and farewell personally. I'm here representing one of those communities that ought to be part of that inclusive community that the young lady with the dealie boppers talked about. I represent the elderly and specifically the senior center. So I will take this opportunity to say I'm not going to speak on that tonight because it's not on the agenda. However, I will make myself available to members of city council. Some of you have messages from me suggesting that if you have any questions relative to the Heinz Center and why we are asking for what we're asking for, and why we think we are a viable, critical part of this community, please give me a call. I'm not a stranger. I wasn't a stranger 10 years ago when we got started with the Act 47 project. I'm not a stranger now to council members. I'm not a stranger to the administration. So if there are any questions that you have, feel free to contact me rather than making assumptions relative to our viability or our contribution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the middle, please? Anyone else to my left? Thank you. Moving on with the agenda. Moving on to approval of the legislative session minutes of June 14, 2017. Council members, are any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, minutes will stand as such. Moving on to reports of committee. Reports from Chair Majors on the work session of June 20, 2017. Mr. Majors, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am. President Williams. On June 20, 2017, Public Works Committee participated in the city council work session to consider Resolution 53 of 2017, a resolution approving the professional services agreement with Arrow Consulting, Inc., to perform engineering services for improvements to intersection at Berry Hill and Cameron Street and other street improvements in the city. We received a brief description of all the scope of services of the projects that they're looking to undertake, which would be Berry Hill and Cameron Street to 13th Street, Brookwood Street, from South 17th through 29th Street, Birchville Street and Rudy Road to Holly Street, Sycamore Street, from Front Street to Cameron Street, and Sycamore Street and Cameron Street to 13th Street. Got the presentation. We received that brief presentation from Arrow. Wayne Martin, the city engineer, signed off, and I am asking that all members vote in a positive for this project. We need some street improvements desperately throughout the city of Harrisburg, and this is just one way to move that process forward. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Moving on to report from Chair Alett on the work session of June 20, 2017. Mr. Alett, are you ready with your report?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also up for discussion during the work session on June 20 was Resolution 47, which is the third proposed budget reallocation. There's a list of things they're going through, so I'm just going to highlight what a lot of the allocations are and then share my thoughts with moving forward on it, too. Up for discussion was allocation of funds for severance pay due to the death of a city employee. Also up, as has been much discussed, is appropriation for funds for riot gear as a request from the Harrisburg Police Department. In the reallocation are IT contracts for Sigma, a contract with Steve Zimmerman, upgrades to the NSYNC Wi-Fi, a printer for HR. There's some discussion over leasing versus buying. Thank you, Hillary. I saw you over here for sending that information over, talking about the importance of the savings coming from buying versus leasing. Also up for discussion was allocation for funds for professional land use design. This is part of the Mulder Square project. Also up for allocation were radios for the Public Works Department that will connect to the county system, and then also a transfer salary and wages into the sustainability manager based on some of the hiring and reclassification going on in there. And then also allocation for funds that are expected to be incurred as part of the sync hole expenses. So what I am proposing and what I will do is I would like to pull out the appropriation for the funds for the riot gear from the budget reallocation. And here's why. Many of the things I mentioned are fairly mundane expenses that don't require a lot of excitement by way of the public, so they make very much an easy sense to be able to move forward with. When we get a budget reallocation for something that certainly invokes feelings and thoughts from the public, I want to make sure we give public do an opportunity to be part of that discussion as to the reason for moving forward with that. So we are going to, like I said, we'll make a recommendation to pull that. That is going to go on to the discussion for the work session that's going to be held on Wednesday, July 5. Am I correct on the date for that? At 5:30 here in council chambers. So for those of you who came out tonight, thank you for coming out tonight. Also, keep in mind, if you want to be part of that discussion, Law Enforcement will be back to talk more about that allocation itself, and if you guys want to be here and here and add your two cents to that as well, you certainly are able to do so. As I pull out the amendment, when I make the proposed amendment, I would ask for support for the remaining allocations that are part of that budget reallocation. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Alett. Moving on to report from Chair Baltimore on the work session of June 20, 2017. Mr. Baltimore, are you ready with your report?
Yes, ma'am. Fred, I first want to say thank you for your service, and always had a great deal of respect for you, and thank you for what you've done with the city of Harrisburg and Marita. Long forward to work with you. Community Economic Development, we met last week at the workshop on Tuesday, June 20. All members were present. We met to discuss bills seven, eight, and nine, these three bills, our ordinance that require council to appropriate funds and authorize expenditures for home investment program, home investment partnership program, community development block grant programs, and emergency solutions grant program, also known as HUD, CDVG, and ESG. Romulus Brown, project manager in DVHD, presented along with Carl Kalbach, our current senior. They generally explained how the program works, that the city must do a three-year consolidated plan and annual action plans to receive these funds, and the goals of HUD money is to provide safe, decent, affordable housing, suitable living environments, and expanded economic The administration's CDVG budget for this year is $1.9 million. Generally, the allocation for money is $2.46 million. The administration changed course a little bit from last year and chose to actively solicit applications from service providers that are also engaged in similar activities that are concerned to HUD, and the administration held meetings throughout February and March in the city. The number of organizations applying for CDVG funds this year were 13, three for home funds, and ESG funds are given directly to a capital area coalition on homelessness. Tina Nixon, currently the VP of Mission Effectiveness and University Officer of Penical Health, partnered with Romulus Brown and Damian Slaughter to be the review team to review the CDVG and home ESG applications. They scored the applications based on a weighted rank system and the responses to the questions that the applicants gave. During the administration's presentation, we also heard from Ms. Parker, Lord Chris, Mayor Papenfuss, Jeff Demont, Chief Enterline, and Police Captain Moon, and we also heard from several service providers, including Les Four of the Heinz Center, Mel Johnson, Harrisburg Housing Council, Wanda Edrickton of Cram, Kate Pickery of Neighborhood Dispute Settlement, a gentleman from Mimpent League, I don't even get his name, Gloria Vasquez, Merica, El Hat, the Latino Hispanic American Community Center, and Gary Lanker of Tri-County HDC, and also a guy from Optech, whose name got passed. Given the council members were given the materials just an hour prior to our meeting last week, we decided we needed more time to review, and we will reconvene on Thursday to discuss them in a bit more depth. At this meeting, applicants will be given five minutes to make any remarks in support of their applications, and five minutes to answer questions that council members would have for a total of 10 minutes per applicant. Following that meeting, council members will submit their opinions and recommendations to meet the chair, and I will discuss those opinions and recommendations with members and try to reach consensus with council members. And following that, the action plan will be submitted to HUD by August 16. The funds available date of October 1, 2017. End of this.
Thank you, Mr. Baltimore. Moving on to ordinance for first reading, we have none this evening. Ordinance for amendment, we have none as well. Ordinance for final passage, we have none as well. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution 47, 2017. Mr. Petrowski, please read it into record.
Yeah, Resolution 47 of 2017 was moved by Mr. Alett, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the third proposed 2017 budget reallocation in order to provide for additional program and equipment allocations.
Mr. Alett, you have an amendment?
Yes, I would like to propose an amendment to remove from Appendix A, line item C2, which is the funding for the riot gear. I'm asking for that to come back down in a separate amendment.
It's a motion. You have a second?
I'm second.
Any questions, comments on the motion? Please call the vote.
Mr. Alett?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Moving on to Resolution 47.
Calling the vote for Resolution 47 as amended. Mr. Alett?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 47 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 53.
Resolution 53 of 2017 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Arrow Consulting, Incorporated, to perform engineering services for improvements to the intersection at Berry Hill and Cameron Streets and other street improvements in the city.
Streets and other street improvements in the city.
Questions or comments, council members on Resolution 53? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allett?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 53 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 58.
Resolution 58 of 2017 was moved by Ms. Hodges, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving a Comcast business services agreement for internet services at the Fourth and Emerald Street Park to operate the park's video surveillance system.
That will be placed in Parks and Recreation Enrichment Committee. Moving on to Resolution 59.
Resolution 59 of 2017 was moved by Ms. Hodges, second by Mr. Allett. It's a resolution approving a Comcast business service order agreement for phone services for park maintenance.
That also will be placed in Parks and Recreation Enrichment Committee. Moving on to Resolution 60.
Resolution 60 of 2017 was moved by Ms. Hodges, second by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution approving receipt of funding from Tri-County Community Action for the purchase of installation of a video security at Fourth and Emerald Street Park and approving an agreement with the RNL Security Systems for servicing of same.
That also will be placed in Parks and Recreation Enrichment Committee. Moving on to Resolution 61.
Resolution 61 of 2017 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allett. It's a resolution appointing Ann Montgomery to serve on the Harrisburg Architectural Review Board.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 61, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allett?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 61 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 62.
Resolution 62 of 2017 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allett. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into a contract with Zodu Incorporated or Business as Seamless Docs for a subscription to Seamless Gov online form automation platform.
That will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 63.
Resolution 63 of 2017 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allett. It's a resolution approving a lease agreement with Eastern University for use of a portion of the basement of Martin Luther King Jr. Building for classrooms and administrative offices to support its course offerings and degree programs in Harrisburg.
That also will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 64.
Resolution 64 of 2017 was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Dowd Engineering, Incorporated, to provide engineering services for Mulder Square.
That will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 65.
Resolution 65 of 2017 was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into a master equity lease agreement with Enterprise FM Trust and Service Agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management, Incorporated, for a vehicle management program that will improve the overall maintenance and replacement of the city's fuel-powered, non-specialty vehicle fleet.
That also will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 66.
Resolution 66 of 2017 was moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to accept a financing proposal from Santander Bank, N.A., for the purpose of financing the lease purchase of two 2017 Ford Escape SE four-wheel-drive vehicles for use by City Codes Department.
That will be placed in Public Safety Committee. Moving on to Resolution 67.
Resolution 67 of 2017 was moved by Mr. Allett, second by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution ratifying the vendor services agreement with the JDK LLC doing business as Easy Pay Corporate for electronic payment processing services for the city of Harrisburg.
That will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 68.
Resolution 68 of 2017 was moved by Mr. Baltimore, second by Mr. Allett. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final land development plan submitted by Janine Peterson to construct a new school medical office building with associated improvements and to expand the existing parking lot for Hamilton Health Center.
That will be placed in Community Economic Development Committee. Moving on to Resolution 69. I'm sorry.
Resolution 69 of 2017 was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a master services agreement for engineering and environmental service with Barton and Laguete's DPC for a conceptual plan, APEA Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, WMGR, O25, general permit application and related services.
That will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 70.
Resolution 70 of 2017 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allett. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with Sigma Resources for transitional management-related services with the Bureau of Information Technology.
And that will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 71.
Resolution 71 of 2017 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allett. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate, enter into a professional service contract with Steve Zimmerman for transitional management-related consulting services for the mainframe programming and related services in the Bureau of Information Technology.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 71, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allett?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 71 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to old business, council members, are there any old business at this time? Hearing none, moving on to new business, council members, are there any new business at this time?
Are you going to do a date?
Pardon me? Pardon? Okay, I was asked to mention that we're going to have work session, which will be July 5, 2017, here in city council chambers at 5:30, to address some of the information that was on the agenda tonight and the business. And also, July 6, we will have a legislation session, and that will be starting at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. Pardon me?
May I be called this afternoon?
Oh. We'll do that later. Okay. Any other business, Mr. Baltimore?
Yes, we're going to have a CDVG, ESG, home meeting on Thursday, 5:30.
5:15.
5:15?
In council chambers here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other new business, council members? I'd like the public to know that please keep in mind, after July 6, 2017 legislative session, council will go on recess until August 29, 2017. So we will not be conducting any business after July 6. Anything else, council members? Hearing none, please give me a vote to adjourn.
Give a motion.
A motion to adjourn.[1767.54]